Good morning. It is Tuesday, April 23rd, 2024. I'm going to call the order, call to order the Story County Board of Supervisors meeting. Please stand if you are able to say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. There are item number eight under agency report, LSI's report. We're pulling that for this week as well as consent. Item number six, we're pulling that one as well.
I move approval of the agenda with the items deleted that the chair itemized.
Second. Been moved in second. Merkin?
Aye.
Basil?
Aye.
Edens?
Aye.
Representer Supervisor Merkin, could you just pull that up a little bit further?
Yep.
Now it's time for public comment number one. This comment period is for the public to address topics on today's agenda. If anyone would like to make public comment, to please come forward. Comment on Zoom, please raise your hand. And not seeing anyone for public comment, we're going to close public comment number one. We'll move on to public hearing items. I do want to recognize that we do have a number of elected officials and department heads, both in the public meeting room here and on Zoom. And I thank you all for attending this morning. We'll move on to the 2025 proposed budget information. Good morning, Lisa.
Good morning.
Morning.
Seems like we've been working on this for a while.
Yeah.
The proposed budget was published in the three official newspapers on 411 as required by law. The budget you adopt today cannot be higher than published, but it can be lowered at this public hearing. There are handouts available that include some of these charts, charts along with the proposed 25 salary, FY 25 salaries for the department heads and elected officials. Story County did see valuation increases. Evaluations are what the taxing authorities base their levies on. We'll talk about the limitations later in this presentation. Okay? So we increased 6.61%, but we were limited to three in countywide. And we increased 7.7 in rural, but we are limited to three there also. So the rollbacks are determined at the state level and is the amount that the property is taxed on. If you own a residential home assessed at $100,000, the taxable value for the upcoming year will be 46,343. For agricultural property assessed at 100,000, the taxable value would be 71.8. The commercial and industrial rollback is rolled back to 90% and backfilled by the state at a reduced rate for the next two years, and then there will be no backfill. So for this year, the 25 year we have in here, we're getting reimbursed at 40%. And then FY 26, we'll get reimbursed at 20%. And then after that, we're done. The multi-res is rolled back to 46.3 also. Obviously, that includes all the apartment buildings that were, that are classified as residential as opposed to commercial and Ames. So the departmental work sessions were held in January and February. The audios are on the website for those, if you're interested in listening to them again. There was across the board salary adjustments of 4% included in the budget and health insurance premiums were budgeted at a 5% increase. The asset, which is analysis of social services evaluation team saw a 6% increase from FY 24. ARPA dollars, American Recovery Plan Act dollars. We are moving those dollars as they're getting spent. Basically, we received 18.8 million. We're budgeting to spend it in the next three fiscals because it all needs to be spent by 1231 of 26. For FY 23, Story County spent 2.9 million. For FY 24, we're reestimating to spend about 8.1 million. And for FY 25, we've budgeted 6.7 million. We also have a capital improvement plan included in the budget. That will be, it's on the website, but it'll also be presented at the board meeting next week. That includes funding for secondary roads, new equipment, McFarland Park Maintenance Facility, Heart of Iowa Nature Trail, more, 3A and 3B in this case, and four and six. A low head dam, Skunk River Green Belt, Hickory Grove Park improvements, the county attorney remodel and the Microsoft 365 and the range house construction. We also are funding some economic development, urban renewal, small communities and home-based Iowa. At the end of the 2023 session, state session legislative, they passed House File 718. Many taxing budgeting processes and deadlines were affected, which is why I said we, seems like we've been working on this for a long time. We were moved up by 30 days or back by 30 days. We will look at what the code says regarding maximum levies in the next slide, but the calculations for the current year are shown here. There's now maximum revenue growth related to valuation limitations, which translates to a maximum levy for the countywide of $3.39 and a maximum rural levy of $2.87. The county taxpayer, the county auditor was required to send a countywide mailing with the proposed levy rates of the city, the school and the county. This mailing, which was prescribed by the Department of Management, gave the dates and times of the public hearings for each entity. No action was taken at that meeting as per instructed. The cost for the county taxpayers, however, was $17,300. So we all but certify our budgets by April 30th now as opposed to March 15th or March 30th. So the levying funds for the county, for countywide services, the code says $3.50 per thousand dollars of taxable valuation. However, with passing of 718, we need to do a calculation for that. So it's actually 339. The general supplemental was not restricted, but it is restricted by what we can levy for. It is a countywide levy. So it was Story County levies for FICA and IPers of the employees paid out of the general fund, insurance, emergency management agency, district court costs, hemultical dependency treatment and election costs excluding regular staff. County is going to, is budgeting to pay for the general election out of the supplemental fund this year. The debt service fund is also countywide. It's per thousand dollars of taxable valuation. The rural basic limit is $3.95. However, we're doing 287. So we are seeing a supplemental levy staying the same at 92 cents. There's no new debt this year, so we are levying what we need for secondary roads and storycom bonds that we sold. We're levying for nine, we're levying nine cents per thousand. And for rural basic, we are levying 287, which is a decrease of nine cents. Tax askings for the proposed budget are higher by 1.3 million, and the overall levy rate is lower by nine cents countywide and 17 cents for rural. So the proposed budget is showing revenues of $54 million, a little over $54 million. The overall revenues are down 4.4% from the amended FY 24 percent of four, FY 24 budget. Sorry, I can't speak. The budgeted revenues for Story County are represented here. So 63% of our revenues are coming from property taxes, 20% from intergovernmental revenues, which includes road use tax, state replacement taxes, state and federal grants. 7% is from our local option sales tax. 5% is from fees for services and 1% is TIF revenue, 3% is interest and rentals. That's how we put the original budget together for revenues. Thank you. For the expenditures for FY 25, I mean, I talk about it all the time when we're doing the budget. We budget by service area. So it's, it's on the, it builds up basically. Overall, the expenses are down 15.7% from the amended FY 24 budget. So of our budget, 18.1 is for public safety, legal, which includes the services of the sheriff and the county attorney. $9 million is for administration services, which includes the Board of Supervisors, the auditor management side, the treasurer management side, all of facilities management, information technology and liability insurance. 9.5 is capital projects. 8.9 is for the county engineer or roads and transportation. $6 million is for county environment and education. That includes conservation, animal control, IRVM, the county libraries and planning and development. 4.7 is for health and social services, which includes environmental health, community services, general county, general assistance, I should say, VA, juvenile court, the HHS local office and many of the asset services. 2.1 is for non-program current. That is for all of the ARPA, mainly all of the ARPA projects that we are, are helping with, with the cities. 1.9 is for governmental services, which includes the recorder, the auditor election side and the treasurer motor vehicle side. And 921,000 is for bonded debt service. In each of those areas, I did point out, and you can't see it worth a crap, I'm sorry, how much of that spending in each of those service areas is actually the ARPA dollars? This, this information shows the current year distribution of dollars by taxing authority. On the next slide, we will look at an individual tax statement and where the dollars go, but this gives you a snapshot of the overall dollars generated by each taxing authority. The schools get about 47% of the property taxes. The cities are next with about 26%. County is at 16% and then all the other authorities are below the 5%. As you can see, there's area schools, townships, city assessor, county assessor, ag extension and the county hospital. So when you come into the treasurer's office to pay your taxes, the breakdown of how those dollars are distributed is, is presented, represented here. I used an Ames resident as an example today. It's based on the proposed rates as their budgets get certified to office by 4:30. So I went ahead and looked at what their proposed rates are, so I have a realistic picture of it. You have a home assessed at $100,000, the taxable value would be 46,300, as we talked about because of rollback, and your annual taxes would be about $1,419. Of that, the school, which would be Ames School District, would receive 46% of those dollars. City would get 33%, the county 15%. The area school, which is DMAC, would get 2%. And the others, which include ag extension, city assessor and Story County Hospital, would be at 4%. If you live in Franklin Township and Ames School District, the pie looks like this. The total taxes would be $1,121. The school, again, is the largest recipient at 58%. The county is 30%. In Franklin Township, they're levying for 3%. And the area school gets 3% and the other taxing entities are, would be at 6%.
Any questions? I appreciate how thorough your report is.
Thank you.
Lisa, I know it certainly takes some time for you to put all that together and in a document or a format that's easy to follow and read.
I don't have any questions. Likewise, I appreciate it. And I also appreciate the other document you put together.
Thank you.
I use that one a lot when people ask about the county budget. I find it's really helpful.
Right. Yeah, both of, both of the presentations are helpful. Thank you. All right. Next, we'll move on to consideration of Resolution 24-69 for elected official salaries.
So I put together Resolution 2469 as presented by the, let me get to it, hold on. As presented by the compensation board that met in December. The recommendation they made is, is on here. They recommended 8% for all elected officials, 5% for, except for you supervisors, which was 5%, 5%?
It was 5%.
Right.
The Board of Supervisors took action on March 5th to lower the recommendation of the supervisors to 4%. So the resolution you have in front of you indicates that.
Open for any discussion?
I would make motion. I would move that we approve Resolution 24.69, including the action of the Board of Supervisors on 3/5/24, lowering the supervisor's increase to 4% and also lowering the increases of the other elected officials by 25% from 8% to 6%.
I missed that.
I'm sorry, what did you say, Lisa?
I missed that. I did not know that action was taken.
No, I'm.
Hasn't been.
It hasn't been. I was, I was.
She's making the.
My motion is to add that to it.
Okay.
Is there a second?
A second.
Been moved and seconded. Further discussion? Merkin?
Aye.
Basil?
Aye.
Edens?
Aye.
Okay, next we move on to, is it the public hearing? The procedures that will be followed for the hearing is for folks to give your name and address. Each person that wishes to make a comment will be heard before receiving second comments from those who have already spoken. We'll give two minutes for comments to speak on the budget hearing. So next we move on to discussion and action of the proposed budget. I want to make sure I'm doing this right. Something feels out of, so we'd be looking at consideration of Resolution 24-70 fiscal year 25 budget. Correct.
Correct.
Okay.
And you'll want to go ahead and incorporate what you just, your, your action for elected official salaries so that those can get adjusted on the adoption.
Okay.
Also.
Okay. So we'll open, this is the time to open the public hearing, correct?
Correct.
Sorry, it just seems a little off. Okay, so open the public hearing. If anyone would like to make public comment, please come forward or if you're on Zoom, please raise your hand. Grace, please watch to make sure if anyone wants to make public comment. Not seeing anyone in the room here come forward or anyone on Zoom, so we'll close the public hearing. And we'll move on to consideration of Resolution 24-7, 24-70 for the FY 25 budget that includes the changes made in Resolution 24-69.
Good job.
Too many numbers this morning.
Too many numbers this morning.
I, I would move approval of Resolution 24-70 adopting FY 25 budget to include the reduction in supervisors' salaries and other elected officials' salaries as approved.
In Resolution 24-69?
Yes. And direct the auditor to certify taxes as published.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Basil?
Aye.
Merkin?
Aye.
Edens?
Aye.
Okay, now we move on to consideration. Oh, no, that is the consideration 24-70.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for all of your work.
Yes, thank you, Lisa. Now we'll move on to consideration of proclamation recognizing April 2024 as Arab American Heritage Month. And Vice American, would you start us out?
Whereas for over a century, Arab Americans have been making valuable contributions to virtually every aspect of American society in medicine, law, business, education, technology, government, military and culture and military service culture. And whereas since migrating to the United States, men and women of Arab descent have shared their rich culture and traditions with neighbors and friends while also setting fine examples of modern citizens and public servants. And whereas they brought with them to America their resilient family values, strong work ethic, dedication to education and diversity in faith and creed that have added strength to our great democracy.
And whereas Arab Americans have also enriched our society by sharing in the entrepreneur American spirit that makes our nation free and prosperous. And whereas the history of Arab Americans in the US remains largely invisible or impacted by misconceptions, bigotry and anti-Arab hate in the forms of crimes and speech. And whereas Arab Americans issues such as civil rights abuses, harmful stereotyping and bullying must be combated in the forms of education and awareness.
And whereas Arab Americans join all Americans in the desire to see a peaceful and diverse society where every individual is treated equally and feels safe. Now therefore be it resolved, we, the Story County Board of Supervisors, do hereby proclaim April 2024 as Arab American Heritage Month and encourage all citizens to join in the special observation. I move the proclamation.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Basil?
Aye.
Merkin?
Aye.
Edens?
Aye.
That is adopted. Okay, we do not have an agency report, so we'll move on to consideration of the April 16th minutes.
I move adoption of April 16, 24 minutes.
Second. Been moved and seconded. Merkin?
Aye.
Basil?
Aye.
Edens?
Aye.
Next, consideration of claims from April 25th, 2024.
I'd move approval of claims as presented.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Basil?
Aye.
Merkin?
Aye.
Edens?
Aye.
Consent agenda items, and just recalling that we've pulled item number six from the consent agenda item.
I move approval of the consent agenda as earlier amended.
Second. Been moved and seconded. Merkin?
Aye.
Basil?
Aye.
Edens?
Aye.
We are now down to additional items, discussion and consideration of the opioid antagonist policy by Stephanie McCarthy and Alyssa Wiggle.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm going to let Stephanie go through this. She is the one that put the policy together and went through all the steps and she can explain everything.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. So this started about a year and a half ago. It seems like it's been a while because it has. A department head came to the safety committee regarding the possibility of having Narcan available in our public buildings in the event of an opioid overdose. After discussion at that safety committee meeting, I then spoke to the county attorney who determined there would be minimal liability to the county and that a policy would be needed. So I then began the process of doing research and found that at least at that time, there did not appear to be another county or city in the state with such a policy. But there were several that were willing to follow along with us if this was something that we moved forward with. So with the help of Alyssa, the safety committee and examples of other policies that I was able to find through some schools in the area, I drafted the policy that's before you today, the opioid antagonist policy. This policy was reviewed by the attorney's office in October of '23. The only thing that Crystal asked was that it be looked over by a medical professional. It took a few months to find someone willing to, just to look it over. I think the concern was no one wanted to sign off on it and it was just kind of a misunderstanding. We weren't asking any, a doctor to sign off on it. We just wanted to make sure we weren't missing anything medically that we shouldn't leave out in the policy. Dr. Sherry, I'll probably slaughter her last name, but Lou Grad from McFarland Emergency Medicine did agree. And she finished the review in March. The only question that she asked was how often we would provide training. And so I explained the process of how that would work. This year, our plan is we will have training for all employees at Safety Day in September. And then after that, moving forward, we will have training annually. But it's sort of similar to CPR and first aid, although that one's done every other year. But with this one, we can do it online or in person. We can make that decision at the time. But community and family resources had reached out. I believe they had been to a meeting. Lisa had shared information. They offer free training and so they are willing to come and do the, and training for free to us at Safety Day and any other trainings in the future. So that brings us to where we are today, asking for approval of the policy. Any questions?
Thank you.
I'm glad that Dr. Flugrad was willing to look at it since she is the medical director at the ED. Mary Greeley and for a good share of the county's first responders, she has the, she has the knowledge for that. So that's reassuring that, thanks for getting that done.
You're welcome.
And it sounds like from your comments, once again, Story County would be leading on a policy on that. And I appreciate that you looked at schools and what their policy is and hopefully we don't have to use this. But just in the world that we live in, it's good to have the information and be trained.
And in addition to the policy, I don't know, Stephanie wants to touch on it. There is a form if it's used. There's specific information that we would need. Stephanie's already created that and, and we've reviewed that. So we do have all the parts ready to implement this at the board.
One thing I, I didn't mention was where we would get the, the medication. The state actually has funding available, and so I would need to apply for their program. We can get for each building five, up to five doses. And that is another reason that we would use the reporting form in the event we would need to administer it. The form, it includes things like their name, the date, if the person, if it revived them. But I would have to provide that information to the state if we used it.
And then is there a plan for when they, when it expires?
I did ask, they, of course, it's going to depend on the manufacturer date, but it's typically good for two to three years. And then if we use it or it expires, then I just request more to replace. They also require that it be in a locked, not, not necessarily locked. It, it needs to be in a, in an alarmed location. And so it will be stored at this point. I don't know if you can see, it's just, it's a, a string bag and it will be in each of the AED.
Boxes.
Boxes. Yeah. And then, of course, though, in the training, that would be announced to the employees so they would know where to go in each building to get it. But we're just going to call them opioid overdose to-go kits, where they could grab the bag and take it to wherever, whichever department it was needed.
And those cabinets aren't locked necessarily, but they do have an alarm if they're.
Yes, most of them. And they all have the capability, like our, the one in this building, it is, the alarm does not go off if you open the door. But we would just have to put a battery in it and then it would, yeah, it would have an alarm.
Yep.
Any further questions? No, no, I don't have any either.
I would move approval of the opioid antagonist, antagonist policy and. I would move approval of the opioid antagonist policy and putting it out for seven day review.
Second.
Been moved and seconded Basil?
I.
Merkin?
I.
Haddon's eye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have a discussion and consideration of using UKG for Human Resources Information System.
I don't want to read the whole thing.
Nope, you don't have to.
You are fine. So what you have in front of you is the final order form or contract or whatever for our HRIS system, which encompasses benefits, performance management, payroll, time and attendance and everything. And we started this process back in September when we sent out a request for information and received information from companies. Then we moved through and determined whether they met what we wanted in a system. And then we went through some demos in November of last year and then did some follow-up information after that point. It took a long time. There was a lot of thought and work put into this process, a lot of reaching out and seeing what other entities do. We did, we did a lot of reference checks. I actually did some more checking yesterday, had another conversation with UKG this morning about some different things, just to make sure that this is, that this is where we want to go. I will say in conversations with other HR directors at counties and cities, there's not one solution that's perfect or that really works incredibly well for, I would say, government or different things. And there are bits and pieces about different things that work well. One of the things we really focused on is the customizable piece of it because we are unique in how we do things. We have various departments. We have different pay codes. We have different leave benefits for union, different, different things like that. It is very customizable, which can be good and bad in different situations, but you set it up exactly how you want and then work through it from there. There are some, some different pieces. I know Secondary Roads has some DOT coding, and we're still looking into some of those pieces. They have other options for their, their time and attendance piece or their software piece. So there are still some things that we're going through, but a lot of those questions will be answered during implementation, which will take quite a while, probably six to 10 months for that is what we're thinking. And, and maybe longer if I like to make sure everything's done correctly and pretty thorough on the testing piece of that. So you will notice that there is, there's a scheduling piece to UKG Ready. We did not put that in there for the whole county or all employees. That is specific to the Sheriff's Office. They are the only entity that really uses some scheduling software. They have a solution now, but they will be transitioning over to the software once it's implemented. So there will be some cost savings there. We will be replacing our perform, performance management piece online with the solution through this. And we do have, it is a suite, so there are a bunch of different things. A lot of times when you're trying to tie it into multiple different systems, that's where you, you have some difficulties. We do have an online benefit portal that we use. We are, we are looking to transition to this mainly for for ease of administration and for employees. We don't want them logging into three or four different systems to get the information they need. I'm happy to answer any questions. It has been reviewed by our legal counsel, and we did make some changes to the agreement that are noted in, in the agreement or in this, this piece. One thing I would like to note, it is, it is, your billing is based monthly on the number of employees that are paid through that. So it can fluctuate from month to month depending on what, what season you're in. If you're during the summer and you have all your seasonal help, your monthly costs might be up a little bit more because you do have those temporary employees that you're utilizing it for. So I'm sure there's a lot of questions, you know, how are we gonna, you know, clock in, clock out? It's, it's going to be very specific to departments and offices on where their employees work, how they want to do it. There are six time clocks built into this quote for all the buildings. We can purchase more. I don't want to do that at this point because we don't know until we meet with each individual department about what's going to work best for them.
Sure.
So.
How long was it going to take for the rollout and implementation, do you anticipate?
I, you know, looking at it and you, they're fully aware that that payroll is handled in our, our auditor's office, and they have an election this fall. The the best time to implement would be and go live would probably be a January first. Is that, do you know, what do we run into, the issues we run into, what do we don't, you know? But, but the seamless would be cutoff would be at year end, obviously, or fiscal year, but that's, that's not going to happen.
Sure.
So. But we will work. And it might take a little bit longer than planned because we have, we do come across some things that need to be worked out, some different programming done, worked with our financial software. This will feed into solutions, the financial software. And they work, they work with the company directly, as does every, every software solution.
So the annual, annually, it's going to be eighty six, nine, forty?
That's the estimate based on three hundred employees a month.
That's, that doesn't start until it's fully implemented.
Correct, one hundred and twenty days post.
So then on page three, you've got a, there's total equipment purchases and accessories fee of thirty one, five, thirty, then a support fee. Is this, and then a total one-time fee?
The twenty three, two fifty would be our implementation fees. So that would be the cost to set everything up.
So.
So that would be one-time fee. The support fee would be a one-time fee. And then the, the equipment purchase, the equipment purchase would be your clocks. If you look on page two, each clock is roughly about forty eight hundred dollars.
So the one times are about fifty five?
Yeah.
Okay.
And we should get invoiced for those. I don't know how quick it'll come. They did tell me when I talked to the, the person this morning, I should get a call within a week usually, and they try to set it up three to four weeks. They'll try to have a schedule set up. But we have a lot of parties to involve and get that schedule, a lot of different, different individuals that will, that will be part of the implementation. So this is actually less than what we budgeted. We budgeted two hundred, two hundred and some thousand for this, two hundred and thirteen thousand. And I based that on what, what fees other counties were paying. At that time, I didn't know what we were going to select, who we were going to select. So it is, it is a little bit less than what what we anticipated. There will be no increases for five years. After that point, it will increase four percent. The up, that's what's called the uplift percentage. That would be your renewal percentage. We are seeing fairly high renewal percentage in software recently. So I think it's important to get that. That was one thing I did have a lot of discussions with them about.
You said it was slightly less than the budget. It looks to me like it's considerably less.
Well, yeah, I mean, I didn't know what the implementation fees, I think I budgeted about hundred thousand for implementation. I just had really no idea. So we did adjust it a little bit for next year's budget. We didn't put as much in there because we kind of had an indication of what it was going to be. So.
Good.
Yeah.
Any further questions or discretion? If not, is there a motion?
I move that we approve using UKG for HRIS and for eighty six, nine, forty annual subscription fees, thirty one, five, thirty equipment fees, eighteen hundred support fees, and twenty three, two fifty for one-time implementation fees.
Second, then moved and seconded Merkin?
I.
Basil?
I.
Haddon's eye.
Thank you, born.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks for all the work that you've done and all the work you're going to do.
Thank you.
Yeah.
It will be.
Next, we'll move on to discussion and direction on draft CIP.
Good morning.
Morning.
Good morning.
Lisa alluded to the fact that this would be on your agenda for next week for final approval. It will be. Today's action is just to bring you up to speed on the public input that was received through this process and receive any additional direction from the board before I bring it back next week. There was no public input received. We didn't receive any public comments, so I presented it, and I'd be glad answering questions and make any changes as, as you see fit in the draft CIP and have it ready for next week's approval.
Is that different from, did we have more public input last year?
We had one comment last.
We had one comment last year, and that's the only one I ever remember since I've been on the board, which leads me to question the effort. Seriously. It's, it's a lower, much lower priority, I think. If we're not getting public comment to put together all the information to get it, it seems to be.
We, we did simplify our approach this year and last year considerably from previous years.
Okay, good.
I think whatever we can do to put out to the public so they're aware, but I, I concur. It does seem like extra work for either no or one response. But that one response is, you know, something to look at as well. But totally get it. It just seems like a lot.
Right, I bet. I think it's important that we have the CIP. I think it's helpful for planning.
Sure.
Oh, yeah, don't, I'm not questioning that. I'm just questioning how much effort, I mean, we need to put it out there, but how much effort we have to do into making a whole bunch of, it can be overdone for what we're getting, which is virtually no public input.
Well, I didn't see any, I didn't see anything I thought needed to be changed.
I think I looked at it quickly, but it seemed like you mean all the changes that we had talked about previously. So I think it looks good.
I think it looks good. I think it's just for us to remember it is a working document and a guide for us as we move forward and work on our budgeting processes or what are potential projects out there for the future.
That's a good point. It's, it's a guide. It's a wish list. It is not a budget. It is not approved, you know? This does not necessarily mean all these expenses are approved.
Right. That help you, Leanne?
Does. It will be on the agenda next week.
Sounds good. Thank you. Next, we have discussion and direction for requests to develop and release and, and requests for proposal for a contractual relationship to guide the development of a climate action plan specifically addressing Story County governmental operations.
Joby and I put together a memo for your agenda. We'll really tag team and be glad to answering questions you may have. We are here just to get some direction from you all as to whether or not staff and primarily, well, Joby is now a former co-chair of the Go Green Team. But I think he will aid in this effort. If we can go forward and draft a request for proposals to bring a consultant online to help guide climate action planning specific to our governmental operations. As you know, Story County is part of the project that's led by Polk County through the funding with the EPA. That is for Story County in total. This was brought up earlier this year by the Go Green Team in that there's some consensus and desire from that group that we have an approach defined for the governmental operations of Story County specifically. That is what this project would entail. We would go through a process where we would develop the RFP in May. If we receive such direction from the board today, bring it back in June for your consideration. Then we would release that probably June, July. These are just some guidelines for us to follow. August be reviewing that in, in in cooperation with the Go Green Team, possibly a subcommittee of the Go Green Team. And then September, October, bring forward our contracts. Timeframe to be developed, probably a year for that effort with a consultant. Not quite sure until we get proposals if we do indeed go forward. As you recall, we did have seventy five thousand dollars identified through funding. Once I became aware of the Polk County project, I said, pull that out. It was ARPA funding. I said, pull that out, not really thinking that the Go Green Team would want it specific for governmental operations. But we are asking now to, not necessarily all ARPA, at some point identify potential funding. If we do go forward with this ballpark, forty, fifty thousand dollars, we think could probably fifty thousand being the high end. Do you have anything you want to add, Joby?
No, I think you covered pretty much the gist of it.
Other questions?
So you're saying how much money you might?
We think the consultant, the high end would be like fifty thousand dollars. Forty to fifty thousand dollars. Again, this would be specific for Story County governmental operations, not the larger project that Polk County is doing that for the entire region.
What's the focus of the Polk County project now? I think it was housing rehab, wasn't it?
That is, the phase two, they did ask for funding to go, the, yes, the phase two is for additional costs to help with housing rehab. The phase one, which should actually logically come before the phase two, but because the EPA did not, the phase one will actually drill down and set the targets, do the planning and the action steps. Phase two is needed to respond to some calls from the EPA for what funding could be really targeted immediately rather than the long-term planning. It doesn't really make sense, but that's how the EPA define their program.
I'm, I'm wondering, and the reason I ask that is whether the Polk County, how, how we kind of have the two of them going side by side, might there be overlap? Might there be some things in the Polk County work that are done that we wouldn't need to be planning to have a consultant do? And when will we know that?
The short answer to that is no. The Polk County thing is, its major focus is the county as a whole, like its citizens and how they can make the county, you know, more green efforts. For them to actually drill down to tell us is our governmental operation, how we can plan for our future is really not that included in their plan in the real simplified manner. Yeah.
No, well stated.
That's why we kind of, once we got to, we knew more of how the Polk County plan was working. That's when, because on the front end, it sounded like it would include governmental operations. But as we learned more, we realized that that was less of the focus of that Polk County collaboration. So that's why in the Go Green Team, we discussed, you know, based off of our greenhouse gas inventory and a lot of other moving pieces, we kind of need we would like to see a plan that's specific to what Story County operation can do to reduce our greenhouse gas inventory.
And the greenhouse gas inventory that we have had several action steps or identified, right?
Yeah, a lot of areas that we need to see reduction in, but not a lot of guidance on how to achieve those.
So the consultants could use that greenhouse gas inventory. They don't have to redo that.
It helps reduce the cost of
Good.
having a consultant because, you know, that's kind of where that initial seventy five thousand number came from is taking into consideration that they might have to do that, but it sounds, but we should be able to use those numbers to help guide the consultant.
If you're looking then to develop an RFP to be put out then, I would assume that you would also work with Assistant Auditor Lisa Markley to potentially identify where that funding might come from?
Yes.
Do you have any idea what the City of Ames study cost?
It was.
Yeah.
I think Sandra, didn't you one time have that number?
I think it was well I think like well over a hundred fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, yeah, there's a different scope here. So, yeah, there's a different scope here, obviously.
There is, and we have different, um, different scope, different size, different nature of our governmental operations.
Yeah. A lot of things we don't provide, the city provides. So okay. Um.
I would be interested just to see what the RFP turns up, like what the proposals are.
And that's really why we're here. We weren't really, um, this is a discussion the three of you have had about directing staff or allowing staff to work on drafting an RFP. Um, so we want to come before you to get some guidance to really allow us to spend the time doing that and really digging down into the specifics and then bringing that forward for you to review and approve before we even release it.
Makes sense. I'm firm, yeah, draft an RFP.
We're not. Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, next, moving on to upcoming agenda items. Do you want to have anything? Um, I will have one thing on. It's a fix. Working with Stacy Harridge for a, um, what was it? A tax. I'm trying to look at how to refer to it. It basically is a transfer tax that was paid that shouldn't have been. And so it will just need to be something that in order for her to reimburse, um, needs to be on our agenda. So it'll be under additional items for next meeting. Uh, moving on, now is the time for public comment number two. Comments from the public on items not on this agenda. The board may not take any action on comments due to the requirements of open meeting law, but may do so in the future. If anyone would like to make public comment, please come forward in the public meeting room or raise your hand on Zoom. And seeing none, we will close public comment number two. Liaison assignments, committee meeting, updates and announcements. Supervisor Merkin, you want to start?
Thank you. This afternoon, I have a meeting of the Watershed Assessment Working Group. And tomorrow morning, NEDC breakfast at Gatherings is on my agenda. And then at ten, I have a headwaters of the South Skunk WMA meeting in Roland. And I will not be at the Fitch Aquatic Center groundbreaking because that was a previous, um, a previous, um, commitment. In the afternoon, we have a working group, broadband working group meeting. Thursday in Slater, uh, Story County Economic Development Group. And Friday morning, um, Mepa Executive Committee meeting. And then next Monday, I don't have anything yet, but full, full week.
Supervisor Basil?
Yep. Um, this afternoon, uh, I have an ARPA meeting at the end of the day. Um, tomorrow, I will not be at the NEDC breakfast. Have a doctor's appointment with my daughter that I'm speaking her to. Um, and I will try to be back for the groundbreaking. I expect to. Um, and then there's, uh, the first Juneteenth Committee meeting with, um, the City of Ames and, um, and double ACP representatives. And then, uh, Story County Transportation Collaboration Zoom meeting. Thursday, um, I have my outreach meeting with Greg Picklap uh, first thing in the morning, and then I'll be in the final navigating differences conference meeting. Um, and then Thursday night, I have CFR meeting. Friday morning, I have CIJDC in Eldora. And right now, Monday is open.
Great. Um, can I just ask, you said you had Story County Transportation Collaboration tomorrow?
Yeah.
At, for some reason, I don't, I don't have that.
Oh, I will send it to you.
That'd be great. I was on there, on there. Um,
It's switched from United Way managing it to Herda or with Danny.
Herda should have, have me on it.
They should, yeah, but.
Would you ask them to send it to me as well? Because I'm not getting it anymore either.
Yeah, okay.
And I won't be able to probably do it. It's tomorrow.
It's tomorrow, yeah.
Yeah, I won't be able to attend because I've got too many other meetings. So.
Um, okay, um, tomorrow, I'm going, I am going to attend the NEDC. I'm going to try to attend part of the Above and Beyond, uh, Passion for Exceptional You in the public meeting room here. Um, I will attend the Fitch Pool groundbreaking and then I hopefully will join the Transportation Collaborative Meeting. And then I have a NAECOS LT Counties meeting Thursday, uh, same, the Story County Economic Development Meeting. And, um, oh, wow, I just got, oh, that was from you. Thank you. And I have CICS meeting in the afternoon. Um, Monday, uh, I have a lunch meeting and then I have a health, the community health advisory meeting at, uh, Mary Greeley Medical Center. And then I have a MICA meeting Monday night. So we're all, we're all busy. So with that, if there's nothing else, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. Been moved in second, Merkin?
Aye.
Basil?
Aye.
Haddon's, aye. We are adjourned.